Good evening and welcome to our Pittsburgh Central School District business meeting. At this point, the meeting is called to order and would you please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. I would like to ask for a motion for approval of the agenda. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries. Thank you. And first on the agenda this evening is Mr. Clark with the Human Resources Report.
Thank you very much. First, for your consideration, we have the professional staff report. We have change in status from probationary to tenure for 25 certified staff members. We have one certified staff appointment, one change from regular substitute to probationary, two SRP appointments, one building substitute appointment, one certified staff resignation, four SRP resignations, and one SRP resignation for retirement.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the professional staff report? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? None opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next, for your consideration is the support staff report. We have five clerical appointments with one correction, five clerical resignations, two transportation appointments, one transportation resignation for retirement, three custodial appointments, one custodial resignation, and one food service appointment.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the support staff report? Thank you. That all in favor? None opposed. That carries.
Thank you very much. And finally, we have memorandums of agreement on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And tonight, we'd like to welcome Mr. Mark Puma from Sutherland High School for the principal's report.
Well, while we're getting set up, just wanted to say thank you very much for visiting with us last week. It's always a pleasure to have you in the building and we always appreciate the support with technology and with all things that we do day in, day out. And also thank you to Linda and Tyler and Patty Chodak for being here today. It was always a pleasure. If Patty chooses to stay, she's actually going to be named in the presentation. I didn't tell her that. Along the way, how about that, right? Great. Thank you, Sam.
Oh, okay. We're getting closer.
Mark's also on jury duty.
I'm in the middle of, yeah, in the middle of jury duty. Okay. Good evening. On the behalf of the Pittsburgh District Teachers Association, oh no, that's Dwayne's. That was for Mr. Piro. I could tell. He was looking. Okay. Okay, so tonight's presentation, I'm going to divide this up into three sections. We're going to talk about collaboration and community in the building. Curricular departments, an overview of the work that's been going on in there, as well as a snapshot of student life. I did that in a couple of different ways. I'll explain that in just a moment. So we did a lot of work this year on our mission, vision, and values and as they relate to Daniel Coyle's work. So we had the work over the summer and we brought that into the Fall Superintendent's Conference days. And for the staff, it really was about bringing his work, his research to life. So combining that with our values in particular, we did a deep dive this spring into the values and then talked about how our values are combined and married with our touchstone. So that when we look at Daniel Coyle's work, specifically the purpose, shared purpose, as well as vulnerability and how we collaborate together. And our touchstone, where we talk about the values, including collaboration, we just ran with that this spring. And again, it was built upon all the work that we had done last summer and coming into the fall. And it was really a blast. It was something that we, as a building community, could all embrace together, no matter which position we hold. And we talked a lot about that, a student's school day, starting when they step on the bus or get into the car, and what that experience looks like, who they're with, how they navigate their day, and including coming into the main office, meeting with our staff, maybe talking to the folks in the counseling office, of course, with their teachers and such. And really, how we as a community kind of surround our students and provide them support in a way that's meaningful to them as individuals. And then that sense of community, like I said, from the touchstone, what that looks like for each one of us and how we can present our shared purpose that focus on student achievement, student success in every form and collaborate in a way that brings out everybody's strengths, everyone within the organization. So what we're looking at here, and I feel like we don't have the animations. I don't know if that's not going to work. Am I doing something wrong still? Okay. I don't know. So this could go horribly wrong later in the presentation because there is a slideshow and a couple of slides. We don't know, right? Okay.
You do have the flash drive though, right?
Yeah.
So worst case scenario, we plug that in and go from the flash drive.
Worst case scenario, I'm just going to vamp.
But you're being vulnerable.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. Just put it all out there. Take the village. Okay. So what we have here, the idea was that we have our touchstone. And in our touchstone, one of the tenants is community. And this is something, the touchstone appears all over our school. And around the school, it's more of a poster, right? But it's how we bring it to life and what that looks like in our interactions. So what I did was I grabbed a bunch of photos from our yearbook staff. And I just asked them, I said, "Could you please just kind of give me a smattering of what the building looks like if you're not in the building each and every day?" So that's, and that's what we did. We kind of took a look at classrooms, library, hallways, cafeteria, events, athletic events, evening events, and those sorts of things, and just kind of talk about what it means to be a community. And again, this is the marriage of all that work that we were doing in the fall and in the summer. I'm going to come back to that in just a little bit. Our curricular departments, and you know what? Before I get into the curricular departments, I do want to share some feedback students gave me about our touchstone. And because I did ask them, there's a group of juniors and seniors, about what they value about our community and what it means to them to collaborate and what it means to them to be vulnerable and those sorts of things. And I just love getting the feedback from the students because it's just so darn sincere. It's completely unfiltered, right? Almost, almost completely unfiltered and just very sincere. But some of the things they shared with me were the importance of a shared sense of accountability. And they talked about what that looks like in a classroom. And this is just so far beyond their years. It's inspirational to me that when you're in a classroom or when you're in their club meetings and those sorts of things, they want to make sure that everybody has a voice. And I just let them talk. I didn't talk about the kinds of things that we do as a staff and we talk about in order to make sure everyone has a voice and really lifting each other up. They were just talking about that on their own, from their perspective. They appreciate opportunities to push themselves in the building. And so when they're, whether it's academics or sports or whatever, just going the extra mile. And they know that they can lean on each other in order to do that, lean on the staff as well. They noted that underclassmen are more active and engaged at school than they remembered as underclassmen, as being underclassmen, which I thought was interesting. Then we talked a little bit about what it was like to go to school during the pandemic and after the pandemic. And they did note that there is, there seems to be more of a divide, a different feeling of engagement in the building now that we're years beyond the pandemic. They saw increased participation and enthusiasm, and they talked about reaching out to teachers for support. And it was an interesting thing because again, I just tried to stay as quiet as possible. And they were talking with one another. And they were talking about what it's like to admit that they really, they need the support and how they go about finding the support. And we actually have a club in the building where students are helping students trying to find support, depending on what their needs are. And older students will help the younger students understand who to go to in certain situations, whether it's our assistant principals, our counseling office, me, whomever, teachers. And they said that they really value the ability to do that. And during their four years at Sutherland, they find themselves doing it more and more. Getting to know teachers on a personal level was a big part of the conversation. This is so interesting. So of course, working with my colleagues for so many years now, I do know a few things about them. So I took a moment, we had some fun with this, and I quizzed the students. And I asked them, "Hey, do you know the teacher who likes to do this or to do that?" And they were able to guess. A lot of the teachers will share these things in the classroom with the students. And the students got there before I did. My point was, we learn better when we're relaxed and we have those strong, healthy relationships. And they were able to speak to that even before I did. And this was also really interesting. They talked about a lot of little moments. Like it's not one big thing. Like you don't have an assembly to talk about what it means to be a community and those sort of, it's the day-to-day little moments. And then what I, and I told them, it didn't really mean a lot to them. I told them about the coil work that we were doing, where he talks about collisions in his book. And it really is that sense of kind of always having a presence in each other's professional lives or personal lives. And that's what really builds those strengths, those bonds between people. Okay, back on track. Curricular department. So we meet weekly with curricular departments. So on the, I'm sorry, regularly but on a monthly basis. So this looks like our department leader meetings, instructional leadership team meetings. Within the departments, they have their own meetings where they're working together. So just what we did was we just kind of talked about where they all are in their work and what their focus is on. So not necessarily goals per se, but certainly at least areas of focus. And just wanted to go through for you what some of the feedback was from the departments. And the first one that came up, and this was several departments, was the consistency in grading practices and reporting learning behaviors. So reporting the learning behaviors is new for us this year. It's going, the feedback is going, is very good. It's going very well. There's a lot of value in it. What we're trying to do is help families and students understand the total picture, not just a quarter grade and that sort of thing, but just kind of share, report out the bigger picture of where the student is in their, in their learning. We are committed to revisiting its effectiveness. We're going to take a look at that at the end of the year, start with some summer work, and then as an ILT, certainly use that summer work to catapult into the school year. And something else that happened is that a lot of other groups internally are valuing that feedback about students. So when our instructional support team meets, IST, we're looking at the bigger picture. So again, it's not just about a grade on a report. It's really the bigger picture about the student. And having that data about individual students really does help teachers meet their needs with a more laser-like focus. There are new learning standards in earth science and biology, so our science department is very busy unpacking those. They know that chemistry and physics is going to go through similar changes in the coming years. So they're working together, departments across buildings, in order to do that work. There are multiple areas for administering world language exams, assessments, those high-stake assessments, especially when you think about the speaking portions of those. And what they're trying to do, world language teachers, they've been talking about this for years now, is trying to find a way to make students as comfortable as possible when taking those assessments. The kids work so hard and they recognize that. And when it gets to the point where we're using multiple forms of technology and that sort of thing, we don't want that to trip up students. We want them to be as comfortable as possible. And then our humanities courses, namely social studies and English, they're doing a lot of curriculum writing, which is never done, right? I mean, this is work that's always ongoing. It's never actually finished. And one of the things that they noted is that it's going very well. They're getting a lot of the work done. And they're on pace for what they're trying to get done during the school year and going into next summer. But one of the things they noted in both departments was that they feel like it's the smoothest work that they're doing. They're most seamless between the buildings. And that just speaks to the strong partnerships that exist between the buildings and kudos to those teacher leaders who are running all that work, setting just the right tone for those folks to do their best work. And then there's ongoing changes to our counselor presentations. While that's not necessarily curricularly up, they do impact our entire building. So when the counselors go into health classes, say, to talk about Naviance and post-high school goals and those sorts of things, counselors are always revisiting how they're delivering that information, how they're staying current on Naviance technology and those sorts of things, making sure that students really understand what the tools, the tools they have available to them before they graduate. So this is where it's going to get tricky. We're going to see what happens in about 10 seconds. This image should change. We'll see if it actually works. But what I did was, I took a different approach to this, is that I grabbed posters from around the building. Because one of the things we learned about a few years ago with the equity walks is that the build, the walls in classrooms, in the hallways and that sort of thing should act like a mirror. And students should see themselves in their building. They should identify themselves with that space. Oh, no. Okay. All right. So I'm not sure we're going to be able to see them. What if I do this? Nope. So we're not going to actually see the slideshow, but these slides were fantastic. The best ones you've seen all year, I'm sure. Plug in the...
I'm excited about these slides. No, so...
Really, yeah, now they got to work. I've been talking about them so much.
All right, let's get out of this presentation and pull it up from your flash drive. Should be the original.
Great. So while he's doing that, I had this idea, like at the beginning of the school year, like, and it really does come from thinking about, people, people always have, they have an interesting reaction when they hear that I'm a high school principal, like at jury duty, but even day-to-day, it's pretty incredible. Thanks, Sam. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I try to describe what it's like to walk around our high school. Oh, we're going to jump right to this one and see what happens. I'll go back to the other. So when I walk around the high school and you see these posters and it's a reflection of the students, it's really like you think about the club activities that they're engaged in. In this one, the students were partnering with students from another school district for a combined jazz concert. But the personalities of the students come through in the club. So you see the biology, the amino acid, yeah. Little dad joke in the flyer. And to walk by this, and you're coming in the morning, like seven o'clock in the morning, you see this sort of thing, it's just hysterical. And then the French club, you know, went with a more, kind of a cleaner look, kind of a professional stamp style. And then really, like I said, the personalities come out in the kids. And here, this is kind of a cute one, but if you look down in the lower left-hand corner, Sigmund Freud has a picture in the bottom left. He was just kind of hiding in there, right? That's the kind of things they'll do. And then there's a throwback, like who uses felt markers anymore, right? But on a poster, here it is, and they're celebrating Italian culture in the Italian club. And then this is a flyer outside of AP Euro. So if you know you're, you know you're a French monarch, yeah, if you intentionally match your upholstery to your cloak. So this is the kind, I mean, just the sense of humor they have. This is USA reaching out to France and France saying, "No, I can't. I'm broke." And then USA saying, "But it's against the British." And the next thing you know, warships coming across turbulent waters to try to help out. So these are the kinds of things you see, and I just love it. And I'm going to finish with this because it's the tea club. So the tea club is the, like, it's insane. It's like the most incredible, it's very popular, very popular. When they took it to SLT, they asked me to bring it to SLT for approval. I thought, okay, tea club, this will be nice. You know, the kind of thing else with tea. We kind of looked at each other and said, "Yeah, this would be cool. You know, we'd like to check this out." So then I saw pictures of the very first club meetings, and there were easily 40 to 50 students at this, with adults as well. It just became very, very popular. And what they do is they share PowerPoint presentations and they learn about different teas from around the world, how the teas were used in history to bring people together, and then they drink tea together. And it's so popular, it's hysterical. It's so popular that they came to me and they asked, "Can we present to the staff at a staff meeting," which they did kind of recently. And this is what, you were about to hear this during the walk over at the building last week. And it was just amazing. We invited Shana Katia over. She came over. She's a big tea drinker. And Mike Piro's looking at me like, "You didn't invite me, Mark? Are you kidding?" I could read your mind at this point, yeah. And, but it was fantastic. And the important thing, and I think I'm going to wrap it up with this, is that in the top left-hand corner, you'll see the students giving the presentation. And each of them talked about what they value about tea club. And it had almost nothing to do with tea. To a student, they named how, they talked about how it brings all kids together, all kids and adults together, no matter what age they are, what their interests are, where their strengths are. They come out and have a little bit of tea together. And that's why they wanted to do it with the staff. So they presented us with this presentation as well with some tea. And we had tea with our students before the staff meeting. It was just fantastic. And it brought me back to the touchstone. It brought me back to all the work that we did since last summer in terms of collaboration and understanding each other, vulnerability, and then doing our best work together, but doing it in a way that allows us to be social. And I said I was going to bring up Patty Chodak along the way. With the technical issues, I just, I did skip a slide that had a few photos in it. The one of them was a classroom, it's a pre-calc classroom, where they were just doing some instructional SEL. And in addition to like doing high caliber math, I mean, just phenomenal. They're brilliant, these guys. They also just took, they just took a break as a classroom community, and they'd had an inflatable ball. And they would just toss it to each other. When they tossed it, they had to talk about something they were looking forward to. It was just, it was midwinter. So the kind of midwinter blahs, how do we get past that? How do we continue to work together with some really heavy content, but to keep it light as a classroom community? They'd catch the ball, talk about it. As soon as I walked in, they chucked the ball at me. It was hysterical. And like literally within days, I went to Patty Chodak's room and same kind of thing. I saw one of these inflatable balls on the student's desk, and I walked past and I noticed, and she had prompts on it. So it wasn't just one thing. They had to choose one from the ball. So this is the kind of thing you see in our classrooms in order to strengthen that classroom community because after all, we do learn better when we're, we feel safe and we're doing it. We work better when we're stronger, when we're together, those sorts of things. And it all goes back to the work that we've been doing since the beginning of the year. Thank you for saving me. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Puma. Any questions?
I guess I just want to say thank you, Mark. It's so fun to go into Sutherland. And when I'm there, it just amazes me how quiet the hallways are, but how electric, different areas are where the students are. And staff and kids and the community seem to be having a great year. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. And thank you for your support.
And Tyler and Linda, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all that you do for our students at Sutherland. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Next, we will have our 2025-2026 proposed budget presentation.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to tonight's 25-26 proposed budget. For tonight's agenda, we will briefly go over our budget guidelines. We will discuss the New York State enacted budget, along with state aid, review our proposed 25-26 budget, go into the summary of revenue sources, and discuss all propositions and legal requirements. And then we will certainly entertain all questions and any comments. I want to start by just thanking our district planning team. Going into our budget guidelines this year, it felt much different. Because of the long-range planning, we knew early on that this year would be a tough year. And we're forecasting another quasi-tough year the following year. And knowing that gives us a lot of time to plan, which impacted how we looked at our values within the budget. And so of course, we first talked about when looking at any kind of reductions or reducing our expenditures. reducing our expenditures, how important it was to make sure we are aligned with our strategic initiative in providing students with the opportunities they deserve in the classroom. And so when I look at the first bullet, one of the things that comes to mind is the work from our ASI office and all of our K-5 teachers as it relates to the first time ever that we will have a fully-aligned K-5 math and ELA curriculum with benchmarks along the way that will certainly help with the vertical alignment as well. So keeping up with our budget guidelines and our promise to continue to provide our students with the highest of quality instruction and being responsive to our student needs, and also understanding that one thing that we can't reduce in the budget certainly is the value we place on continued growth with our staff that's embedded in our core values, and making sure that our professional development is certainly strongly aligned to our strategic initiative in the world around us. What we are seeing in our classrooms certainly are a wider gap of student needs, from everything from academics to social, emotional to mental health, and helping and supporting our teachers and administrators in a way that all students can be successful in those classrooms, in our classrooms. We spent quite a bit of time on this slide, recognizing the year that we are in, especially engaging our district planning team in thoughtful, long-term and short-term financial planning, to the point where we actually created videos, or a video, that we sent and showed to all nine buildings to help them better understand that we have more money coming out or going out than coming in. And really, that's our challenge this year and a little bit next year, is when we just look at our current status quo, we're still spending more than money that's coming in. We'll talk about that briefly in a minute. But we certainly rebounded with a strong and concerted effort to advocate with our legislators around New York State Foundation Aid. Last year, we received about $10,000 in foundation aid, and while the budget is not approved yet, we're anticipating closer to $600,000 this year. And it wasn't just Pittsburgh, it was, a big part of it was our Pittsburgh community, but it was also the efforts of NICE, Monroe County School Boards Association, taking several trips to Albany, writing tons of letters, phone calls, et cetera. And our legislators, our local legislators, did a great job championing our cause to the budget development process. And as we look forward, we are coming off a capital, we're about to embark on a capital project, coming off a capital project vote. And one of the reasons we're able to fund a capital project is because we're able to borrow at one of the lower interest rates because of our bond rating. And so making sure that now and into the future, we continue with our AA1 bond rating, which will help all of our capital projects and cost to the community and cost to the projects be much more palatable. So we spent quite a bit of time at our district planning team with our budget guidelines. You've seen them now at four presentations, but I would just share with you that they're more than just words on paper. The budget guidelines were used in all of our conversations as we looked at reductions this year. As we looked at some factors going into the year that also were connected to more money going out than coming in, we're considering the federal funds no longer being accessible. And then we have the uncertainty and the change in the state around how they're going to be allocating foundation aid to districts. And that was a big question mark for us going into the year. A surprise for us this year happened in January, when we had, all districts had a significant health insurance rate increase, which was very costly and a big part of our revenues this year. Other things we had to consider were the lack of drivers that we have this year and how we're able to still transport students without using our staff and having to contract more runs. And we certainly have looked at the major areas that we can't drop the ball in around mental health, security, and special programs, and thinking about the best ways to make sure we're securing funding for them. As we think to the future, we also have to be very cognizant of the fact of how we use our reserve funds in our fund balance, as this is not a source that would be something that we can plan for to continuously use to offset a gap in the budget. And so this year, we have used more reserves to close the budget gap. To be honest, we'll probably use more than we typically do next year to help close, to close the budget. And so we're using that for the right reasons, but we also have to be cognizant that this is more of a short-term fix than a long-term plan. We're expecting deficits going into the following year because of many of the things that I shared, but looking at where we may land with foundation aid, our tax cap projections are in the range of 2%. If you think about, if we kept the same staff as we have this year and did nothing else and just rolled the budget over the next year, we're looking at about 4% of revenue that we need. And our revenue primarily comes from the tax levy, the tax cap levy, which has been capped in the low twos. We have continuous minimum wage increases, which are impacting salaries, which impacts the money going out. We have health insurance rates that I already spoke about. We have the unknown as it relates to TRS and ERS rate increases. And we've been living in a period of time where inflation has been well over 2%, yet we've been capped at 2% within the tax cap formula. So we will continue to look at reductions, efficiencies, and continue to advocate. And while I, what I just shared with everyone seems like gloom and doom, it's far from that. We are doing extraordinarily well. We're managing this very well. I can't thank our unit leaders in every single unit enough about how they are able to come to the table and look at efficiencies, and how we're able to look at attrition, and how we're able to look at doing what we do so well with less or doing it differently. So as far as our timeline and process, you can see where we are right now for the budget adoption. Prior to that, we've gone through three budget workshops. And then prior to that, we have collected budget materials, we've held meetings with every budget originator, and then we've submitted, they've submitted all the requests to the business office. And that kind of starts the process. And running parallel to that is our work at the district planning team to try to take those numbers and needs and prioritize them and make it fit within any given budget. The next two important dates after tonight are May 13th, which will be the budget hearing, and then May 20th will be our budget vote held at Cockins Road Middle School. I need to thank Terry and Rachel for their incredibly hard work in the business office as it relates to making sure our numbers are accurate and timely. I've asked both of them to attend other meetings, to assist in explanations and help us problem-solve, and they've done that under the direction of Mike Vesby. So our business office has really knocked it out of the park, and I thank you. And Mike, I thank you, and turn it over to you.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Pirro. It's also a pleasure to work with a leader who understands all of that and can really speak to it, so we appreciate your leadership. I'm thinking after Mr. Puma's presentation that maybe during the budget workshops next year, we introduce the concept of bringing tea forward, and that might help ease into some of the discussion that we have. But as Mike said, we're in really good shape this year. We've come a long way, and I'll be brief in the presentation overall because of all of the work that we've done up to this point with our workshop format. Unfortunately, no new news in terms of the budget approval process down in Albany. We took bets today on a state ASBO conference as to when we thought the budget would be approved. I threw out May 9th. The consensus, though, was probably closer to the end of the month, so no update yet. There has been, in the past, we talked about the longest that the budget has gone without approval, and there doesn't, there doesn't seem to be any sense of, you know, the need to get that done this year. But there was a budget, has to be approved in principle prior to when we set the tax levy, so we hope that it's before then. But some of the assumptions that we go on in terms of state aid is really what came out of the executive budget proposal in January. We know what the one-house budgets look like, we know what the high watermark would be. We don't anticipate much of an increase in revenue, but it's not, this is not some, this is just like something that's happened in the past. We, you know, we got used to, four or five years ago, where we had consistent budget approvals on April 1st, which allowed me to speak definitively to the state aid. Tonight's numbers will include an estimate based on those earlier projections that we looked at, actually in February. So just some caution statements in terms of the estimates. You've all been very well-versed in terms of expenditure-driven aids being estimates. Foundation aid, potentially, we could get a little bit more if the 3% limit is used. And then, you know, of course, transportation and building aid are dependent on some factors as we finish up the fiscal year. So based on the executive budget proposal, you can see overall, we're looking at about a 1.23% increase, 2.65% in foundation aid, and that's the... There we go. And that's something that we're going to continue to take a look at, and that's something that Mr. Pirro mentioned, that from a forecasting standpoint, that's where we really want to, you know, stay in tune with what's happening in Albany from that standpoint, because foundation aid is fully funded, there's been some tweaks to the formula, but we're not sure what's going to happen. We would probably be a district that would fall under the minimum increase due, which was proposed at 2%, and then, you know, there's a proposal at 3% from the legislative proposal, so we'll wait and see what happens. The other aid estimates are based on estimates that were contained in the executive figures that were used, which were figures that were submitted to the State Education Department in November. Transportation aid, we've talked about the increase in that area based on some of the factors that we're studying. And in fact, I'll talk about that later tonight in terms of an efficiency study in transportation. No secret, we came out at 2.34% with the tax levy based on the tax cap calculations. You know, again, as Mr. Pirro said, we're capped at 2%, and because of some of our exclusions, we're allowed to go a little bit higher than that this year. The real issue is that inflation is in that 3.2% range, so it's down from the previous year, but there's still that gap that we really could use in terms of the tax cap. Our pilots are up slightly, there's only a couple of them, and actually, one is going to expire next year, so those numbers will go down. Sales tax, I've made no secret that we're going to add $300,000 from our budget, and really, we'll have to wait and see what happens next with the economy in the area. We did receive a fourth quarter payment that I'll mention in the Treasurers report that does look like we're going to continue to receive some additional income. In this area, I've made no secret in terms of interest earnings. We continue to do very, very well with investing every dollar that comes into the district. I mention it every time we do the Treasurers report. So we brought in $700,000, or an 87.5%. We needed a realistic dollar amount. My concern there is there's a projection of two to three Fed rate cuts through the end of the year. So can we continue to earn those funds? We still have a little bit of hedge built into this number, but this is a number that I'm concerned about. In the future, we're not going to be able to increase that revenue to offset the, some of the expense growth or the appropriation growth. We are using money from the TRS Reserve and another $300,000 appropriate fund balance, so 26.82% more reliance on fund balance, which, again, was mentioned by Mr. Pirro. It's a great one-year, but not a multi-year, because it just widens the reliance on a savings account that's not a recurring revenue source. But what I'll say is, very appropriate under the situation that we face with this budget So overall, this is what revenue looks like, $168.2 million budget, $6.4 million increase or 3.97% overall. When you look at the total state aid number, that is a budget-to-budget analysis. What I want to note for the record tonight is that the hedge that we've been used to in the last two years, where we can kind of look at a low watermark in terms of state aid overall, this number that we see in the budget is really online with what we think we're going to get, right? So there's not going to, you're not going to see that increase from a budget-to-budget perspective next year. So it's going to, this is more accurate. So the hedge that we've had in the past, or that cushion, if you will, we've removed out of this budget. So we're looking at actual revenue projections and not anything that we're, you know, kind of being conservative. We're on the number with a lot of these revenue sources. Overall, the proposed budget for all schools is $64.4 million. This is a recap, really, of the work that our administrative team has already done. So I'll go quickly through these slides because they've been fully explained. Elementary schools, just .08, middle at .35, and then high schools at .69. Central Student Services, slight increase, and then overall, some reductions in the CIO office that we're projecting based on retirements. And then central admin, down slightly because of administrative reductions that we have in the district this year. And then overall, support staff services, we've removed utilities and kind of trued that budget up, and then found efficiencies in finance and auditing and printing and mailing services. The majority of the time that I spent previously was on the undistributed expenses. And at District Planning Team, the question came up by Dwayne, thank you, Dwayne, what's the percentage, the rate increase that we have for health insurance? So the health insurance rate increase for the second part of the year was 14.4%, where we anticipated about 10. The overall budget-to-budget increase is closer to 16.5%. So if you look back 10 years, that's a huge increase. So that's going to be a factor that really is going to bear on the district's future that we've got to keep an eye on. So the largest increase in this budget district-wide is in that benefits area. I highlighted, you know, some of that information for you, and again, I'm not going to repeat it from the last time we presented. The only thing that's changed fundamentally from the appropriation budget from our last session was I added 160,000 more in possible pre-referendum expenses for a capital project vote in May of '26. That would include an infrastructure capital project vote. So that's really an increase, a new number that you see on the appropriation side. So overall, how does this look? So we sliced and diced the budget a little bit here, .38% in schools, 10.29 in that undistributed. So those are the, those are the differences. The changes in central admin for, and for overall admin reductions. And the only thing I'd point out here is, it's tough to grow a budget that you know when salary and benefits are going to increase, probably in that 3% to 3.5%. It's tough to hold the budget back at such a low percentage overall. Again, this is just a visual of, you know, schools, 38%, unallocated 38%, and then support services at 12, and then you can see the breakdown of the other. But this really tells the story. So overall, .62% in salaries, you'd expect to see that in the 2.5% to 3%. So we've taken a close look at what we've budgeted in salaries in the past. You had reductions in the salary line through attrition, you had reductions in the salary line through salary breakage with the retirements that we see this year. You don't catch a break when there's a retirement with health insurance reductions, right? Because that person then just goes into retirement, and now we hire a new person and add health insurance. So you don't see a break necessarily for retirements in the undistributed side of the budget. So what we did is we removed a lot of that internal fund balance that would fall out at the end of the fiscal year out of these categories. So again, that's an area that, you know, you can do just so much before that catches up. And luckily, Terry's really taking a close eye at our fund balance and is tracking that, he's done a couple revisions this past month. So that's an area we'll keep to, you know, keep close monitor of because... So, that's an area we'll keep to, you know, keep close monitor of, because that's the area where we can replenish our reserves at the end of the fiscal year if we use them. And also, we do a great job in this district with fiscal planning for capital infrastructure, for our bus replacement plan, for our technology replacement plan, you know, so on and so forth. And it's good to be able to replenish those. If we continue to hold these budgets tight to close a budget gap, it's going to be harder and harder to have that money at the end of the year to fund those reserves. But overall, you can see $168.2 million budget, $6.4 million increase at 3.97%. 85, if you look at the chart on the right, 85.76 of the increase was in benefits this year. Seven in salaries, that debt service and transfers, that's part of that is the $160,000. And then, some of our other categories, which we decreased. So, this is a neat chart, just to say, what changed in our budget? The majority of it, the orange part, is benefits, right? And then, what's the component budget by object? You can see what the percentage of, you know, we're still looking at the majority of our budget is in salary and benefits. It's in people. More than enough discussion about revenues, but just a little breakdown in revenue. Tax levy makes up 70%. It used to be 72%. So, the increase that we have seen in foundation aid overall, from a trend standpoint, you know, that's changed a little bit in terms of the reliance now on state aid. That's also scary from the standpoint, we know that our tax cap increased, right? We know that that increase is going to be limited into that 2%, 2.5% range going forward. I can forecast that out multiple years. So, we'll get to the fund stuff, the required proposition. So, obviously, the vote is going to be on the budget vote. We've got the Capital Reserve Fund for bus purchases, and then, the use of the Capital Reserve Fund for instructional technology, and then, board members. So, when you go in to vote, these are the, this is what you're actually going to vote on when you come in. We're looking at $2.4 million in buses this year, fully funded out of our reserve fund, right? This is on par with our replacement plan. And make sure that we are also prepared, as we move forward, for electric buses and the timeline for electric buses, right? So, this keeps up with our replacement plan. And as we mentioned last time, the plan for electric buses would begin next year after our comprehensive plan has been submitted for our review that we can discuss at a later date. We've got a half a million dollars, as outlined previously, for the Instructional Technology Reserve. So, the idea is to spend these, to spend money out of the reserve to offset the increase in the budget. So, both of these votes result in no tax increase when voters come out to the budget. We've done a great job of saving funds, being fiscally prudent, saving the funds to help offset those expenses, those annual or year-to-year expenses impacting what happens with the tax levy. So, in summary, just fast facts. We closed the $1.5 million budget gap. Amazing job, team effort. We've got a very comprehensive list going forward. Everyone's on board, and we've got the support of the District Planning Team. So, no decisions in isolation, really a great team effort. Really proud to be part of that. Budgets balanced within the tax cap. Got a 2.34% projected tax increase on a budget-to-budget of 3.97. So, again, great job from everyone around. New this year, spent a lot of time researching that light bulb. Then someone said, "Well, Mike, it's clip art." And I said, "Yeah, that is, but we had to get the right one." So, we are allowed to spend $100,000 of our capital transfer budget. We normally have a budget of about $600,000 to do maintenance projects within the budget. $100,000 of that, we just simply designate as a capital outlay project. That generates aid at our building aid ratio the following year at 72.6%. So, we're anticipating $72,600 back the following year. And we can continue to run that through each year. It just has to be work that we can do in one location. So, we've selected Thornel Road to do various HVAC upgrades. So, we're just reutilizing money that we already had set aside to be able to generate that immediate revenue back to offset the increase. So, legal requirements. The board's got to approve the superintendent's recommended budget plan. We've got a tax cap submission that Terry and I updated yesterday with the $160,000 pre-referendum amount. Terry's going to take care of the property tax report card, which I'll outline in discussion, and an administrative salary disclosure. We, I think it started two years ago, you can early, you can vote early. That's allowable, and we still have absentee ballots. And then, we've talked about this a few times, but we've changed the voting location to Cawkins Road. So, that'll be new this year. And Mr. Piro's already outlined the next important dates. Again, Cawkins Road Middle School Gym. And on that, I will pause and turn it over for questions.
Quick question. And because this, I believe, is the first time that we're seeing this, your lightbulb slide there. I just appreciate the explanation, because I was reading through this in our packets over the weekend, and I thought I understood it, and you just explained it even better. So, just thank you for that.
Yeah, it's just tweaking already, money that we already spent, it's tweaking it, organizing it, getting approval for, you know, an under $100,000 project at one location to get that aid immediately the year after.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Thank you, Mr. Vesby. May I have a motion for adoption of the 2025-2026 budget? Thank you. We've indicated that there are no questions, so all in favor? None opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. So, next, we will have approval of minutes. May I have a motion to accept the March 11, 2025 minutes? There will be an abstention, but all in favor? Not opposed? Those eyes have it. That carries. Next, there is an approval for the March 18, 2025 special meeting. There will be one abstention there. All in favor who were present? Motion, please. Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. That carries. So, with the Board of Education, are there any special reports this evening?
Really quick, just a report from Legislative Committee. Last week, we had Regent Hale and Regent Orwood come and talk to us. We had a record number, I believe, for our Legislative Committee, both in person and on Zoom, which was great to see. They shared with us the federal impact that we're seeing on state education. And it was a really great presentation that they gave to us. And they suggested that they come back in towards the end of May or early June to talk to us again. So, I'm working on setting that up. And also, May 7th, we will have a Legislative Committee meeting on Zoom. We don't typically have a meeting in May, but with everything that's going on and with them coming back in, the budget not being out, all the things that are happening legislatively, we decided it would be important to have a committee meeting. So, again, that'll be on Zoom, and the information will be out about that, too.
Thank you. So, there are dates, upcoming dates to remember. April 14 through 18, our schools are closed for spring break. April 24, there's a board visit tour at Allen Creek Elementary School. By show of hands, may I see who could attend that? Thank you so much. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is May 13. Next, we will have our BOSI's annual election and budget vote. So, first, we will look at the candidates that we reviewed, the packet for the candidates. And so, seat one, all in favor for the election of David Byron Burcher, resident of Rush Henrietta Central School District? Seat two is for the election of Kim McCluskey, resident of Pittsburgh Central School District. All in favor? Seat three is for the election of Rebecca Hicks, resident of East Rochester Union Free School District. All in favor? Thank you. And finally, there's an administrative budget vote to approve the proposed BOSI's administrative budget in the amount of $5,586,391 for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. All in favor? All of those actions are approved. Thank you. Another financial report from Mr. Vesby.
I'll keep this brief. So, for your consideration is the acceptance of the Treasury Report. As I mentioned, interest earnings is running in this report at 1.6 million compared to a budget of $800,000. So, again, we do well. I've already mentioned the sales tax information. School lunch revenues are down due to one less serving day in February. We've also bought more food in advance. So, it's just a natural runout on that report, where meals will catch up with expenses, you know, as we finish strong into the year. So, I don't anticipate any issues there, and spending is otherwise on track.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the Treasurers' report from February 28, 2025? All in favor? None opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Next, for your consideration is a budget transfer request specifically for Barker Road's PA system. This is similar to what we had done last year with Jefferson's Road PA system. The PA system here, we've had some significant challenges with, in terms of repairs during power outages. And we do have some money in the capital project that's used, obviously, with the majority of the major construction that's going to take place in the building. But we find that if we can get the hardware and the installation cost for the majority of the project, and then combine it with some of the wiring that we have in the capital project, that'll be an efficient way to approach the overall challenge. And from a timing standpoint, normally, I try to get a PA system into the project. When we planned and voted on this project, it wasn't, the challenges didn't present, you know, the way that they do now with some of the power outages. So, we just thought, from a safety and security standpoint, that it would be beneficial to fund this through BOSI's, get the BOSI's aid, and then use some of the wiring that we already had built in to finish some of the wiring in some of the constructed areas. So, for your consideration is this transfer, but it's more than just a typical fiscal transfer. I wanted to make sure you had the information as to, you know, really, why we're doing it and why it's important from a safety standpoint.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the budget transfer request for the Barker Road PA system? All in favor? Not opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Okay, next, for your consideration is a budget transfer request for flooring and fire alarms. This is typical year-end work that we do, and it's really moving funds around within one budget code. But just in terms of transparency of the dollar amounts that we move towards the year end, I wanted to make sure that it was just brought to your attention.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the budget transfer request for the flooring and fire alarms? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Okay, thank you so much. Next, for your consideration is an amendment to the campus construction, construction manager contract. Originally, when we had appointed this contract going back, I went back and looked at the memo, we had indicated that we were not going to have, we were not going to appoint an additional staff person to oversee the project until we knew what the scope of the work with the bids came in. So, bids came in favorable. We are able to do the work at all locations. And since we are going to be at all locations, we need that additional staff member to do that. Campus came back in consideration of the situation with a different staff member at a lower hourly rate. So, it's actually a reduction from the original RFP or, you know, quote that they provided for us at the time. So, again, based on the scope of work, the award of all the alternates, you know, I'm recommending that the board considers this amendment.
Thank you. So, may I have a motion to accept the 2023 CIP Campus Construction Contract Amendment It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Thank you. That carries.
So, next, for your consideration, bid awards are on the consent agenda, but I will call your attention to the transportation efficiency study, where we'll be looking at bus routes. We'll be looking at the non allowable pupil calculation to make sure that, look for efficiency ways to make that lower, which drives more aid. And we're looking at, long-term, you know, what are some structural things that we can do to combat this from a structural standpoint, combat the bus driver shortage? So, we're going to be looking at, what if we did look at a project, what would it take to do three trips instead of two? How would it impact the bell schedule? Those types of things. So, it's not a comprehensive study that would be done with immediate recommendations, but there's both short-term recommendations for route efficiency, and then, longer-term implications for what we would have to do as an administrative team to some of the, you know, more higher-level recommendations. So, this goes back to a discussion that we had about a transportation summit meeting when we really experienced the shortage before the December break. So, we're constantly looking at ways to improve and enhance our services, given the route cancellations that are very disappointing, that we see on email in the morning for our, you know, for our families.
Thank you, Mr. Vesby.
And then, finally, under discussion, I always make a point to do this for transparency, but you've got the property tax report card. Again, Terry prepared this. This is a requirement that will go into the State Education portal. And what's new, and again, we do a great job with our schedule of reserve funds, is on the second page, it outlines all of our estimated year-end balances that you'll vote on in June. And right now, an early look would be that we'd be able to fund some of our balances based on the efficiencies of our, the efficiency of our budget right now, the additional revenue that we've taken in with interest earnings and sales tax of roughly $9 million. So, we're still looking very good at the end of this fiscal year. But again, that's the number that we're concerned about going forward as we tighten the margins on the budget. So, right now, we're having a very efficient budget year. And so, that's what is actually on this as an estimate at this time. Obviously, revisions of those projections will be given in June for a vote.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have a special education report. Ms. Woods?
The Committee on Special Education recommendations are on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. And finally, Mr. Piro, Mr. Pretentious's report.
There is a need for an executive session to discuss the discipline of a particular person.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the call for executive session? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. That carries.
Thank you. And for your consideration is our DECA field trip approval to Orlando, and that would be for Sutherland.
May I have a motion for the field trip approval to Orlando, Florida, Sutherland High School, DECA? Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor? None opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to highlight, we do have in your packet on the consent agenda, Policy 1210 that does outline our need to have a Sutherland and Mendon student in an ex officio role on our board, starting next year. Tomorrow, during our retreat, we'll discuss what that process for selection of the students would look like, as well as what their responsibility would be for sitting on the board. Are there any questions tonight regarding that? It is exciting. Okay, great night. I loved our tenure reception. I think it's a great tradition that we have in the... and the, as much concern that we see around teacher shortage, and it is legitimate, the teachers that we continue to bring on board are of the highest quality, so, I'm going to be prouder of the cohort that is coming through this year for tenure. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? All in favor? May not oppose, that carries. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? And so, there, it's no public comment this evening? And may I have a motion for a German? Thank you, all in favor? Thank you so much, that carries. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.